Okay, it looks like we're good now. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting for May 6th, 2025. Rick, would you? All right, we will start out with a presentation from the Health and Human Services Behavioral Health Adopted Proclamation recognizing May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month. Okay. Do you want me to read it first? Sure? The proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month, whereas May is recognized as Mental Health Awareness Month across the United States of America since 1949, encouraging awareness, improving access to mental health, and whereas mental health is an essential component of overall well-being that impacts how individuals think, feel, and act. It is critical to living a fulfilling life, and whereas the Trinity County Board of Supervisors recognizes the impact of untreated mental illness and substance abuse on the lives of its residents of Trinity County and desires that all of our residents live healthy, productive, satisfying lives, knowing that wellness and recovery is attainable, and whereas the Trinity County Board of Supervisors recognizes residents of the county who struggle with symptoms of mental illness or substance use disorder and encourage their full recovery. And this board also honors those providers who assist in the wellness and recovery of county residents. Whereas, all citizens are encouraged by this board to learn more about mental illness recovery so that all county residents can enjoy healthy, productive, satisfying lives with a vision of wellness and recovery as a new reality. Now, therefore, be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity do hereby proclaim the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month duly passed and adopted on the sixth day of May, 2025 by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Liz Hamilton, Health and Human Services Agency Director. All right, so May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Mental health is not a luxury. It is a fundamental part of our overall health. Often, it can be misunderstood, stigmatized, and overlooked. People, regardless of age, background, or income, face mental health challenges, and many suffer in silence because they fear judgment or don't know where to turn for help. Raising mental health awareness means more than simply acknowledging that mental health or mental illness exists. It means creating a culture where seeking help is often seen as a sign of strength. It means educating ourselves and responding with compassion and support. This slide will be built into the minutes, so you can read through every bullet point, but this is a call out that one in five people will experience mental illness in their lifetime. 12.5% of adults 18 and older feel symptoms of anxiety, and 5% regularly feel symptoms of depression. So it's our privilege and role to support the mental well-being of others. Serious mental illness is defined as a mental, behavioral, or emotional disorder resulting in a serious functional impairment which substantially interferes with or limits one or more major life activities. And this is where the role of our county mental health comes into play, serving individuals with serious mental illness. One in five U.S. adults experience mental illness every year. One in 20 adults experience serious mental illness every year. For our youth, one in six aged 16 to 17 experience a mental disorder every year. Suicide is the second leading cause of death among our youth ages 10 to 14, the first being accidents and the third being cancer. Here on the screen is our contact information, and this is on our county website along with other resources that I want the public to know are available. Mental health is just as real and important as physical health. By speaking openly, listening without judgment, and standing together as a community, we can help create an environment where everyone feels safe to get the care they need. I am confident that we could each close our eyes for a moment of personal reflection for ourselves or a loved one. And although our experiences and stories are different, there is an invisible thread between us, a mutual recognition that we are deeply human. In recognizing ourselves in another story, we can feel seen and less alone. When we prioritize mental well-being, we not only help individuals thrive, we lay the foundation for a healthier, more resilient society for generations to come. In closing, for the last five months, I've had the privilege of getting to know our Behavioral Health team and the incredible work that they do for those in our community with serious mental illness. I want to thank each and every one of the employees of Behavioral Health and Alcohol and Other Drug Services at every level, from leadership to support staff and clinical staff, for the work they do day in and day out. They're helping change lives for the better. They are change agents, and our community is therefore less alone. I would like to thank those that are here today. Brian Marshall-Wings recently promoted to Branch Director for Health Services. Shawna Ridgeway-Win, our Triage Manager, Sherry Chandler, our AOD Manager, Catherine Legorio, our Lead Clinician here in Weaverville here today, and I would love for them to come up and receive the proclamation. In fiscal year 2324, we had served 281 individuals with serious mental health. This year, we're serving 310. And anywhere from 60 to 70 for those with substance abuse or others. The work that they do is tremendous. I cannot underscore that enough, that being short and impressive. And I'm thankful that I get to support them in their work. But thank you.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
Motion?
Yes, I will make a motion to approve.
And I will second.
May I make a statement?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you. Your department is just constantly looking out for the hearts and souls of our communities, and I really, really appreciate that. I honestly do not know a teenager since COVID that doesn't have some type of anxiety or depression or some something that just was unraveled during that period of time, being away from school and their activities and what they value. And I know that it's very difficult for our teenagers in this day and age with social media. And so, any work that we are doing to help them, I'm very, very grateful for that. I also have a deep heart and concern for, you know, people with small children. You get overwhelmed very quickly, and in times of economic hardship, people get very stressed, and some of the things that would have just typically been normal day-to-day events can become overwhelming. And so, making sure that we are have our eyes on them always, especially our elder care as well, when you get isolated in your home. Maybe your kids don't stop by as often because they're so busy themselves. It's just so important and so valuable that we keep our eyes on our people and that we offer them support where it's needed. So, once again, your department is just so good at keeping Trinity County's heart in a good place, and I thank all of your team for that.
Supervisor Luke Weiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Chairman Gogan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. That was certainly one of the more funner proclamations we've done. So, thank you, everybody, for doing that. We also, we're going to move on to A2, and this is a proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity recognizing the week of May 4th through 10th, 2025, as Public Servants Recognition Week. Whereas, public servants serve the American people every day at the federal, state, county, and city levels. They do the work that keeps our nation moving forward. And whereas, public employees take not only jobs, but owes. And whereas, many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, Border Patrol officers, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others, risk their lives every day in service to the people of the United States and around the world. And whereas, career civil servants carry out the most fundamental purposes of government, to ensure public safety and represent the public interest in addressing social, economic, and political challenges. And whereas, these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes leaders and elected officials. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity do hereby recognize the week of May 4th through 10th, 2025, as Public Service Recognition Week. The Board of Supervisors also encourages all citizens to recognize the accomplishments and contribution of government employees at all levels duly passed and adopted the sixth day of May, 2025, by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity.
So moved.
I will second.
Supervisor Luke Weiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Chairman Gogan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Chairman, may I have a second?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Ms. Hamilton, could I please get you to come forward? So, in recognition of this week, CSAC, one of the professional organizations that Supervisor Luke Weiler is our representative at, is promoting this week by highlighting a particular individual that was nominated from numerous counties. Yesterday, through various social media outlets and online platforms, Liz was put out there and recognized for her efforts. So, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the county for everything that you do, that you will do, that you have done. It's recognized at all various levels, and just a big thank you for what you do. And here's a nice plaque for everyone to see. We'll get a picture of this, but this is a nice plaque from CSAC for your display somewhere, I'm sure, and then a nice personal note from the CSAC Chief Operating Officer, who runs the CSAC Leadership Institute program. So, I know it's just not you, it's a team, and your team is here, but it takes somebody to lead that team, and you have done an extraordinary job, in my opinion. So, thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
All right, let's get the board. If we can get you guys to come on up.
And I guess just one last thing for Liz, all the great things that she does. She was our CIO for a while here. So, talk about wearing many hats. I think you and Suzie got that covered. So, thank you. Thank you very much. You do a great job. Your leadership, unbelievable. We couldn't be luckier. We will now receive an update from the U.S. Forest Service Representatives regarding matters of interest in Trinity County.
Good morning, Supervisors. Good to be here with you again today. Wanted to give you a little bit of an update on what's been going on around your national forests. As you're probably aware, we did some prescribed fire treatments in the Weaver Basin last week and the week before, amounted to about 87 acres. It's not as a lot of acres, but it's certainly very close to town and very strategic and very important. We're very grateful for not only our staff across the forest, but also our partners who came to help us implement that prescribed fire. So, we've got that going on. Wanted to let you know, we also have fuels work going on in the Hyam Palm project, in the Pettyjohn project, and still going on in the August Fire Footprint. We will begin work on the Bowerman project. That NEPA document is expected to be signed this month with work starting in June at the latest. So, that's exciting for us as well. From a fire standpoint, I want to let you know our staffing is, we have staggered staffing on. We have some of our folks on and beginning to staff our resources. We are not fully up and staffed yet, but we are maintaining some coverage. And as you likely know, we've responded to a couple of fires already on the Hay Fork Ranger District, one out, the most recent out in Hyam Palm. Okay, wow, should have worn my glasses. Recreation, the Backcountry CCC Crew is in place. They'll be working up at the East Fork of Coffee Creek Sugar Pine area out in the Alps, helping us get those trails in shape. So, appreciate that. And our local folks continue to get our facilities cleaned up and ready for the season to start. Planning efforts. North Trinity County Project continues through the planning effort. As I said, the Bowerman CE should be signed by the end of this month. The Big Ranch Community Risk Reduction, that scoping document will come out at the end of this month. We've already have some work underway with wildlife surveys and botany surveys have started. And we've been having, the Fish and Wildlife Service was out there last week to look at that project with us, and we've had tribal partners out there as well. We will have more information on that once the scoping document comes out. In addition, the Junction City project is underway, and we're working with the Watershed Center to get that project. It's a fuels reduction project around the community of Junction City. The Watershed Center is taking the lead on that planning effort for us. South Fork Mountain Project has an AFRC meeting today. They're going to visit the site. That's the American Forest Resource Council. They have a field trip out there to look at that project. Ranger Lark is hosting that trip, along with some of our staff is up there as well. WCF, Weaverville Community Forest Fuels Reduction Phase II ARC surveys are continuing. We're waiting to get some more of those ARC surveys complete so that we can sign off on the rest of that document as well. For implementation, as I said, you can expect implementation in Bowerman in the Hyam Palm project, in the August Fire Footprint, in the Pettyjohn Planning Area. Yeah, and then staffing. Most of our staff have been undergoing quite a bit of preseason trainings. I'm happy to say, this year, for many of our trainings, we've opened that up to our partners as well. So, we invited our partners to NEPA training, especially with specialists writing reports. We also did a timber training and opened that up to our partners as well who attended. So, those trainings have been going well. We've also had leadership training and fire refresher and all the normal preseason stuff going on. So, that's been the bulk of May for us. Want to highlight the work we're doing with partners. So, I mentioned the Watershed Center working on Bowerman and starting up on Junction City. They're also finishing up Corral Gulch. And, sorry, and they're also assisting us with surveys on the Big Ranch Project, wildlife surveys, and some aquatic surveys. We're working with Cal Poly Humboldt, who's helping us get our ARC surveys completed on North Trinity County, as well as Big Ranch Project. We're working with the RCD, plan to kick off their planning efforts on the Musser Hill Fuels Reduction Project, where they'll take the lead on that planning effort, and we'll keep that whole contract under them. We work with the Northern California Resource Center. They're helping us with botany surveys on Big Ranch. We work with the Great Basin Institute. They offer us forestry support and augment our staff. We work with the Hoopa Tribe. They're implementing some of the fuels reduction work out at Hyam Palm. We're working with the Reddy Rancheria, who's doing fuels reduction work on the Car Fire Footprint. And we're working with our local non-federally recognized tribes to tap into their ecological, traditional ecological knowledge as we go out and look at Big Ranch, and we look at these projects and decide, you know, work with them to see what right looks like and what makes sense on the ground. We're super grateful. I had a trip with one of our tribal representatives yesterday out to Big Ranch, and it was very educational for me. Also, working with Trinity County, as you guys continue to help us mitigate hazard trees in the South County on Ranger Lark's unit primarily. Always appreciative of Ascend Wilderness Experience, who helps us with environmental education and some work out in the trails and the Alps. And we will be hosting another, by that long list of partners that we're working with, to increase our pace and scale, we will be hosting our partner event again this June. So, we'll not only get some thank yous in, but we'll be strategic about finding other opportunities to partner. I think that's what I have for you. Oh, Ironside, oh, I got some road stuff too. Ironside Fire Camera, we're working to finalize the timing with our tribal partner, as well as the placement for our camera on Ironside. As you know, that lookout burned in the August Fire Footprint, and we're looking to get that area covered with a camera. That's progressing well. The Pelletree Road is fixed. However, as you're probably aware, the 30 Road had a failure. We've had our engineers have been out there. 30 Road is kind of the back road over to Ruth. The engineers have been out there and assessed it, and we're working on trying to get a plan together and get some funding available to take that road failure on as well. So, almost got there. We fixed one, and another one fell apart on us. I think that's what I have for you guys today. Again, we're busy getting ready for the field season, getting people onboarded, you know, getting ready to go, and work is progressing on each of your units, I'm happy to say. So, I'm available for any questions, if you have any questions for me.
I love hearing all this work that involves your environmental planning components, and it looks like that is all going forward despite our concerns about how that might kind of pull back a bit. So, you can confirm, it's just, it's happening, it's working, those folks are there. I love that. Thank you.
Yep.
Yep, good to know.
I did leave off the lake transfer is proceeding on schedule, and that is May 12th. So, in just a few short days, that transfer of the management of Trinity and Lewiston Lakes will come over to the Weaverville Ranger District.
I have two things. One, I just want to say that the Junction City project is fantastic. Seeing all those piles and the burning that has already happened is just really good to see. It's a good example of what preparation and management, I think, should look like around our community. So, thank you for that. I do want to ask if there's any way possible, perhaps, a CC Crew or something that can deal with that single acre parcel there in Big Flat. It's just overwhelmed with noxious weeds, and it's kind of a hazard to be that much vegetation just left in the middle of that developed community right there.
Yes, ma'am. I checked that out yesterday while I was coming through and had that on my, unfortunately, in all of my travels, I'm like, oh, I got to get to that. So...
Just something to consider and remember.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to ask if maybe at the next update, the boat ramp update. I know that's ongoing and it's long-term, but just to keep us informed on how that's progressing.
Yes.
When the boat ramp opens, we need to have like a major county celebration.
I think, you know, just the champagne, you launch the, you know, on a boat, the first boat we launch off of that thing. Agreed.
Thank you.
I will just circle back, since we hit boat ramps again. You try to picture 40 dump truck loads of Scotch broom. You can't picture it. You got to drive out to the Fairview Boat Ramp and look at the result of having removed 40 dump truck loads. I cannot thank you enough. That place is beautiful. It's, again, preserving the wonderful sidewalks and the concrete and the visibility and the parking and all the things. So, as we look at spending money on putting one in, it's so great that we are taking care of what we have, and it's just awesome. Thanks.
Absolutely. And I did neglect to say the Smart Center. Smart Center worked with our rec staff to implement that work out there. So, appreciate you bringing that up. Thank you.
I just want to thank Kristen Larks, who's been wonderful. She's really good. She's been working really hard up where we are, and I really appreciate all you guys have been up in the August and all the tree removal. It's making a big difference. So, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Supervisor.
Chair, thank you very much. We look forward to your next presentation as we move into fire season a little bit more.
Yeah, by next time, I'll come and be able to tell you exactly how many engines we have staffed. We're making selections out of the last round of our hiring. What do we call it? The spring fire hire. So, I'll be able to give you real numbers on how many engines are staffed and how many days a week and all of that stuff. We're definitely looking really good, better than we've been in a very long time.
And can we get those numbers next time?
Yes, absolutely, sir. All right.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day. Thank you so much.
Say how it'd been for me.
All right, I will.
Okay, A4, Transportation. Receive an update from Caltrans District 2 regarding current projects within Trinity County. Good morning.
Board panos would normally be here and do a little quick introduction, but he is out with the CalFire crews right now at the Browns Ranch Road, getting them going this morning. So, that's why he's not here, but we got a great presentation from Caltrans.
My name is Bill Barnes. I'm the District 2 Caltrans Project Manager for Trinity County as of July of last year. Barely new to this job. Been with Caltrans a little over 26 years. Been around a while. We wanted to share with you the projects that are either ongoing or will be coming your way shortly, give you an idea of what you're going to have to, going to be facing this summer as far as traffic delays and that kind of thing. So, initially, we had them create a slide that had all of our projects on it, but as you can see, it is a mess. This includes the... is a mess. This, this includes the, uh, locations for the broadband middle mile work that Glassroots is doing as well as the, we have a, a curve warning sign. It's district wide where they're replacing curve warning signs, various locations, various curves. They tried to plot that on here and it just plugged up, up the, uh, slide. So really what we have coming as far as larger jobs is, are these before shown and there's, there's a couple other ones that I'll mention. First one is, uh, it's number 22 on this slide. It's lower left at Mad River. It's Mad River Culverts Project. It's about a $250,000 culvert replacement job. Uh, that'll be run by our roadside maintenance department. Probably going to be a short duration. I'm not sure exactly when that'll happen, but it, it should be early summer, I believe. The next one, uh, number 23 on this line is what we call the Douglas City Chip Project. It's a, it's a small maintenance job, approximately four weeks. The actual chip seal part of it will probably take two weeks and probably a, a week or so to get the striping done and then they'll be, they'll be out of there. So that, right now is anticipated to occur in July. I like to do that work when, when the weather's warmer. You can expect probably a 10 to 15 minute delay on your way if you're heading towards Reading on 299. Next one on my list is what we call the Deloma Combine Job. It's just got going last week. Between post mile 15 and post mile 25.7 on 299, they're doing some paving work, upgrading some guard rail and, uh, constructing some new turnouts out in that locate, out in that area. This was a combination of two projects, the Deloma Cap M Project and the Downriver Turnouts Job. Bid last year and is just now going to construction. And you can expect that job will probably take them all this year and probably carry into early next year. And the final one that's on this sheet is the Tangle Blue Project, which is way up, uh, north on three. Uh, this one is still in our design phase. We're, we're pushing to get it out to bid. We're pushing to get the job out this fiscal year and to bid probably in August or September this year. I don't anticipate any work starting this season. It's possible they could do it. Depends on the weather. If we have really nice weather into the, into the winter, they may do some culvert work. But most likely this project will start next year, once the weather gets better. This is a $23.4 million job.
How much?
23.4. Uh, there's 47 culvert locations that they're gonna be working on and then repairing. So part of the reason that very first map I showed you was so plugged up is, uh, we have a job going on right now called the Trinity County Bridge Maintenance Project. It's a carryover from last season. It's, uh, $5.2 million in work. And the reason it's all over, it's 16 bridge locations. They're all listed there. It's mainly, it, most of the work is on three. They do have, uh, two bridges on 299. One of them I saw they were working on, they had Indian Creek. So they, they, I think they have all the locations ground already. They're planning to put methacrylate and then a polyester overlay over the top of them. Hope preserve the bridges. That project should get done late this year. As far as going projects, we have that. We have, uh, as I mentioned, Glassroots is all over the place with their fiber optics installation. That'll continue on. And probably what more importantly you guys want to hear, even though this isn't in Trinity County, is the, uh, Whiskey Town Bridge down at Whiskey Town Lake. Uh, so earlier this year, they installed a, a bridge safety monitoring system. That's supposed to enhance functionality and extend the useful life of the bridge. Uh, that's been installed. They're monitoring currently. There's no plans to have any closures there through the summer. You should be able to get through there on your way to Reading without any delay. At the earliest, we, we could be looking at a, a job starting late this winter. But I haven't heard anything about it going, so. Stay tuned. For now, for now, there's no, no planned delays through Christmas time anyway. And then we have two other projects that are in the works that'll be coming, uh, 2026, first being the Burnt Ranch Project. This includes the Burnt Ranch School Left Turn Lane Project that the county is contributing to.
That's good.
It's so far it's on schedule. Everything's going well in our design. We anticipate it coming out midsummer, uh, 2026. And that's another one where coming out that late in the year, the contractor will probably wait until the following year to really get going on the project. They may do whatever they can before the weather hits late in the summer, but most likely the work will come, uh, 2027 when they're out there. Then our final one is, uh, Poker Bar Culverts Job, which is, uh, large culvert replacement, um, uh, goes from the Shasta County Line all the way back through Weaverville. Various locations, there's 72 culverts are gonna be replaced. And that's, uh, 11 and a half million dollars worth of culvert replacements. Oh, I'm sorry. Seven, seven and a half million. The, the Burnt Ranch Project is, uh, 11 and a half.
Burnt Ranch was 11?
11 and a half with, with the combination of the Burnt Ranch School Road Project as well. That's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
I have, I have a question.
Supervisor, let's go right ahead.
It's, it's, it's not necessarily a question as much as it is just, uh, kind of a, a chronic, a chronic, I don't know if it's a complaint or just an awareness that the, um, in my district, I'm District Four, so I go from Junction City to the county line. And, um, one of the, the issues that a lot of the business owners complain about during summer work season is when the, when the, um, traffic is stopped right in front of the driveways to their businesses. It eliminates business completely because, um, so many people, they won't stop because they don't want to miss traffic or their driveways are, are blocked or only given a, a small, um, space to turn into. And it just causes a lot of economic hardship. And so there's something to just, um, I don't know how it can be addressed, but it is something that I, I get a lot of requests to help rally. Um, the cry that if we cannot hold traffic directly in front of businesses, it's, it's helpful. It allows at least the local people to get in and out. So thank you for that. I know you guys are doing a monumental task trying to keep our roads where they are because we live in a tectonic region and they fall all the time. But, um, that's just something that from an economic standpoint, it would, would be helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I just went, um, so, so Southern Trinity in the Zinyel, uh, can't hear me, I'm sorry. Senior Ruth's area, um, anything planned for that? Doesn't sound like it here.
Nothing that I'm aware of. It's possible a maintenance project maybe, but,
Maintenance?
But that would be our Caltrans maintenance performance.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Thank you.
Um, maybe so. Uh, it's, it's good to meet you. You and I have met over email this past week. And so now nice to put a face to a name and, um, congratulations on your new position, relatively new. And, um, yeah, just good to have you. Um, we've interacted over the crosswalk situation and, and you were CC'd and so it's probably not, um, a, there's just ongoing concerns about that and the, you know, the last information provided was more to where, um, we kind of don't qualify for funding because we haven't had, um, extraordinary enough, uh, impacts. And, and so if anything, you know, not to have you necessarily respond to us here, but just to know that those concerns continue, we would like to find solutions to our, and I'm speaking downtown Weaverville. Um, there's three cross, crosswalks, um, but two of them have had, um, really serious, you know, accidents take place there. So, um, if we can just continue that conversation and I don't know to what degree, uh, you are pulled in on that because I don't understand really how the categorization of workload gets distributed within Caltrans. And so, um, this may not be that place, but, um, we, we do have some really, uh, serious concerns.
Yeah, I'm not directly involved with the project you're talking about.
Okay.
Definitely it's something our Complete Streets Unit can look into.
Thank you.
I guess a follow-up didn't, I just, because I know Supervisor Cox has been trying to work this for quite some time now. Do we feel like we have the right names of the right people to reach to? Do you already feel like you do or, or should we ask for that?
I do. There was a number of folks CC'd on that message and wrapping your head around who fits in what pocket is the, is the trick. But, uh, asking gets answers, so.
And you can always contact me and I can get it, try to get it to the right people.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody good. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good seeing you. Next is Health and Human Services. Office of Emergency Services received a presentation from the Trinity County Office of Emergency Services regarding ReadyTrinity, Trinity Gov.
Good morning, uh, Chair Gogan, Supervisors and Member of Republican Staff. Um, my name is Caleb Jensen. I'm a Staff Services Manager at Health and Human Services. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity, uh, to share an exciting and essential new resource for our county, readytrinity.org. Trinity County's official emergency alert and information hub. Uh, this launch represents a major advancement in how we prepare for, respond to and recover from emergencies. Uh, readytrinity.org provides a central accessible location for trusted information before, during and after emergency events. Trinity County faces a wide range of natural hazards from wildfires and floods, uh, to dam failures and power outages. Residents often seek clarity during fast-moving or complex incidents. And we need a centralized, accessible, trusted platform. And that's exactly what readytrinity.org provides. Uh, it's a county-supported website, um, that features step-by-step guidance for hazards, checklists and resources, zones and alerts, emergency information and recovery information. It delivers timely critical alerts and serves as a comprehensive preparedness hub before, during and after emergencies. On this site, uh, readytrinity.org, you can also learn about hazards, uh, what to do before, during and after. Uh, and it also lists, uh, based on the hazard type, county, state and federal resources. The hazards that we have listed on the site currently are wildfires, extreme heat, power failure and landslides. Um, there are Harper links below each of these that you can visit or you can just visit readytrinity.org. We also have earthquakes, winter weather, flooding and dam failure listed as well. On this new white website, you can also find your evacuation zone. There are instructions on the site and how to use the Zone Finder and you can print out a zone card. Uh, we also hand out zone cards very regularly through outreach, um, and events that we attend. On this site as well, we have a section called Build a Kit Locally, uh, where our, um, public health, community health workers have gone out into our community and surveyed, um, our stores to see, uh, what items are at each store that can be purchased to build a disaster-ready kit. So not only on this site can you, uh, find how to build a disaster-ready kit, you can also find out how to do it locally and at which stores. Uh, and then we do plan to survey these stores biannually just to make sure that the list is up to date as much as possible. So Code Red is now readytrinity.org. Um, all of our Code Red data has been imported into the new Ready Trinity system. However, we are still encouraging residents to re-register with the new system to provide updated information just so we make sure that their information is up to date as possible. Uh, registering is easy. You'll just visit readytrinity.org and click on Register for Alerts. Uh, you'll want to start by selecting your preferred language, entering your name, an email address, and selecting a user ID that you can easily remember. Afterwards, you'll need to enter a password. Make sure that it meets password requirements. You'll have to enter the same password again just to confirm that it's correct. Provide a phone number. You'll select mobile or other. You'll agree to the terms and then you'll just click Create Account. Once you create your account, you'll be taken to this page. This is the profile page. Uh, everyone's profile is given a score and the goal is to get your score as high as possible with 100% being the ideal. To do that, you will need to go in and provide as much information as you're comfortable providing. Uh, you can add people or household. In addition, if you have people with, um, medical issues or anything like that, you can do this in this section as well, just so that first responders are aware. Uh, you can provide addresses, uh, a phone number, emergency contacts, uh, vehicles and animals, whether you have cattle or just house pets. And after you finish completing your information, you'll see that, that your score updates. And again, 100% is the goal. Um, to promote this new website, we do have an advertising plan and I'm going to go ahead and hand off this presentation.
Good morning, Chair Gogan, Board of Supervisors. Thank you. Justin Caparuso, I'm here. I had the pleasure of supporting Caleb and team on some of the communications efforts around, uh, marketing of the new Ready Trinity platform and registration process. So, um, thank you for having us this morning. Now that we've got this amazing resource, uh, available and at our fingertips, the, 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 the big job of making sure that people register for it, uh, is underway. And the system's only as effective as those that are registered. And so we really do need everybody's help in making sure that, uh, the community knows about the, the, uh, platform and the, uh, they walk through the registration process. We've developed a communication strategy that is, uh, both immediate and long-term. Um, some of the immediate communication, um, tactics include the distribution of a, a press release following this presentation. Um, we have submitted a, uh, Director Hamilton has submitted an op-ed to the Trinity Journal that will hopefully run tomorrow. Um, we are working on, of course, a robust social media campaign, um, that's going to be, uh, launched today and continue on throughout the year. And then we've also, um, connected, we plan to, uh, incorporate the, uh, communications and, uh, registration process through, uh, the Trinity County Newsletter that's available to, to anyone who subscribes to that as well. You can see here some of the social media that's been developed to support the campaign. Um, this is again immediate and long-term. We do have social media campaigns scheduled for each of the hazards as well throughout the year. So as the, um, hazard becomes timely, um, based on, uh, the time of year, weather, inclement weather, things of that nature, um, you'll see the, uh, communications support that through social media. And all the social media will be focused on pushing, um, uh, viewers to readytrinity.org and encouraging subscriptions. Some of the other, um, advertising components that are going to be taking place throughout the year, uh, beginning in the summer, include digital advertising, print advertising, potential radio spots and, uh, uh, advertising on the transit buses. So you'll see buses going around town that will be able to, um, market readytrinity.org. We're also working on, uh, a number of community outreach. We're also working on a number of community outreach projects, really getting the word out through different community events, farmers' markets. We're working to have a banner placed on Main Street in the summer to market the website platform and registration as well. And we're working on pulling together a partner toolkit that we can easily share with organizational partners throughout the county to encourage them to promote readytrinity.org through their channels as well. Beyond that, I'm going to turn it back to Caleb and we can address any questions.
Does have any questions?
Any questions on the board?
I do. I'm sorry. Sometimes I'm taking notes on something I heard and I missed something I should have heard. So we've been using a Code Red app and I believe there's an app associated with this. Did you mention that or is it not true or what am I?
There is a Code Wrap, or I mean, an app with readytrinity.org that you can download, though we're not really promoting it. We are promoting to push everyone to readytrinity.org and the county website just because that's where we have the most control over information and can publish it.
Okay. And that by registering all that you had said where you're putting in your phone number and all those sorts of things and how do you want to be notified, you'll still get notified like you would have in the app. It's just that there's a more robust experience through the website.
Yes. So once, once you register for an account, you can select any way that you want to receive notifications, if that's email only or a phone number or through an app, you have the ability to set those preferences.
So you can utilize the app. You're just saying that it's less robust?
It's, it's not less robust. It's just that our goal is to push everyone to readytrinity.org.
Well, and I guess it's my, my experience is that the website and you just, your very brief walkthrough includes a whole bunch more information than we've ever been able to see on the app of Code Red.
Yes.
And so if we just go back to that and think we're just going to see that, then we're very much limiting what you're putting together for us.
Correct. So all of the hazard information, all of the active event information, other than the alerts that are sent out, those are all available at readytrinity.org where the app is just alert-focused.
Okay.
Will you be meeting with and providing a brief presentation or in some way handing out tangible information to all of the volunteer fire departments?
Yes. So the Fire Chiefs event is next Monday and we're hoping to be at that. We also have plans for Disaster Council and I believe there is one other meeting that we plan on attending too.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
And your yard signs look great.
Oh, thank you.
Kind of everywhere. It's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. We move on to public comment. This time it's for information from the public. On matters not appearing on the agenda or within the consent calendar, all comments limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. Do we have any public comment in the room? Go right ahead.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Margaret Lewis and this is Vivian Deniston. And I'm Chair and Vivian is Vice Chair of the Humboldt County In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Board. We are also members of the California In-Home Supportive Service Community Alliance, or CICA. CICA is a statewide organization composed of members of advisory boards from 28 counties and holds semi-monthly virtual meetings to inform and train members and the public on various ways to engage with recipients and providers and to keep abreast of the legislative actions that affect the IHSS program. We are here today as part of our advisory board's outreach project to support and encourage development of advisory boards in various counties. Counties are mandated by the California State Welfare and Institutions Code 12031 to form a public authority to carry out the delivery of services of IHSS and an advisory board to report to the governing board. These reports are designated to inform the governing board of the effectiveness of the IHSS program and to make recommendations for improving the delivery of services. Advisory boards also outreach into communities to inform the public of the IHSS program and provide support and networking for care providers and program recipients. One of the most valuable functions of the advisory board is to provide a voice for consumers to express needs and concerns and to play an active part in their own care. And I'd like to insert a comment here that there is a budget provided, combined federal funds and state funds to give each county advisory board about $6,000 at various a little bit to carry out their various projects, whatever they might be, outreach or advertising or printing or any kind of other expenses. There's a, there's a prescribed list of expenses that may be incurred. So we encourage the establishment of an advisory board here in Trinity County. And this is done by ordinance of the Board of Supervisors. We also encourage you to visit the CICA website at cicaihss.org to learn what the organization and other counties are doing. The California Association of Public Authorities, CAPEA, is also a valuable resource. They meet monthly and are responsible for public authority budget distribution and they also keep abreast of legislative action regarding the IHSS program. The Humboldt County Advisory Board is also here to help. We can be reached at ihsspublicauthority@humboldtcounty.ca.us and my personal email, and I have my business card for you each to have one, is ml@asis.org. And please feel free to contact us at any time. And thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming.
You're welcome.
Both of you. Thank you.
And my address is in Garberville 23 Alice Avenue. Vivian's address is in Eureka 2040 East Street.
Is it in the paperwork that?
No, I didn't include that. I didn't know you wanted it. So I can write it down if you'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much both of you. Thank you very much. Any other public comment in the room? On Zoom?
Ben Kellogg?
Hello, Supervisors, CAO and staff. Two things I'd like to bring up today. One, I'd like to highly encourage the Supervisors and CAO to collaborate in writing a letter to Caltrans and our state representatives to urge them to find funding to add new guardrails near the river areas of Highway 299 in Trinity County in light of the horrific accident that happened within the last week so that tragedies like this can be averted. And two, I'd like to encourage the county to start enforcing the daylight law passed in 2025 so that that prohibits parking within 20 feet of a marked or unmarked crosswalk. To Supervisor Cox's point and the Caltrans rep that previously spoke, we need better crosswalk safety. It's like the Wild West out there, especially downtown where cars and big rigs speed around the corner in front of the courthouse and up north. It's imperative to have county code enforcement stringently enforce this law for safety of our citizens. Also, for a county that's looking for additional funding, I would think this would be a good way to increase funding through enforcement and ticket riding. Although most of the time, I don't like that. This is the time we should do it. We all see the issues with people being hidden behind cars parked near crosswalks and this issue needs to be rectified. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Suzy?
I have no additional response.
All right then. Does anybody need a break before we move to the? We're all good? Okay, reports and announcements. Reports from department heads.
I have none on Zoom.
Very good. A report from CEO Todd Hill.
Thank you, Chair. I've got a few items. There have been some department head reports that are filtering in to the board and they're posted online for your awareness. So for my report, we had a meeting on the 24th of April with, on the California Radio Interoperability System. Meeting was with the Public Safety Communications Group, who is an organization under the Cal OES structure. The meeting included, included Sheriff's Office, TCOE, OES, Volunteer Fire Department. We had some good discussion and the team has a much better understanding of what the CRIS system offers and the associated timeframes and capabilities. The county team will review, is in the process of reviewing what we were presented and will continue to evaluate the options. Some other counties are starting to migrate towards CRIS, but like most everything, there are pros and cons and there's also costs and time involved. For example, Mono County had a $3 million grant to help them jumpstart their project and conversion to CRIS. And they will be quote "live" on CRIS in the October, November timeframe of this year. We will continue to evaluate options for CRIS locally, but there may be a need for a one-time overall system evaluation, potentially done by a consultant or a combination of consultants who are knowledgeable county individuals. And if that is, if that is needed and that's the consensus of our local group, I will bring that back to the board obviously and ask for that authority. In addition, we're continuing to keep our current system operational and working some equipment maintenance issues that we know about as the snow is disappearing from the areas that we have repeaters and our current equipment. I met with the Prism, Prism CEO Anna Liant, who are our, you know, insurance, those responsible for our insurance, not necessarily the brokers, but are those that are responsible for our insurance. Across the board, they're seeing the same types of insurance costs increases that we're seeing probably personally. And that's just the realities of the industry these days. They are working with different brokers on different levels of the claims we have within the county. So for the different levels of claims, like under $300,000, $300,000 to $3 million, $3 million to $10 million, there are different private carriers who provide that insurance, you know, on behalf of the larger entity. And they're the ones who actually make the payment if in fact that claim is validated and it needs to be paid out. However, in the public sector insurance world, there's a much smaller number of private companies who provide that insurance. And they're running into some challenges industry-wide as far as who's going to be providing this insurance and the amount of competition that's available. But we are working some different angles to keep our costs down. For example, we're currently working a safe driving course through Trindell to attempt to lower our incidents for vehicles and driving because the short answer is, you know, the less claims we have, the more our rates stay in check. So we are doing some things in the risk management arena to hopefully control those things which are within our control somewhat. As you know, our previous IT Director retired at the end of April, effective 1 May, so just a few days ago. And as Michael was retiring, you know, we had a recruitment out there for a new IT Department Head. The selection committee consisted of HR Director, myself, and the Calusa County IT Director. We reviewed nine candidates and the committee's unanimous decision and consent was to offer the IT Department Head to position to the only internal candidate, Dan Reed. So Dan accepted the position last week and effective 1 May, he is the new IT Department Head. So I congratulate Dan and I've already done that and encourage you to do the same. And for everybody's awareness, that is our new IT Department Head and we're very happy to have Dan in the seat. I previously talked about some CRV recycling in this forum and I'll just provide a quick update. So we received the Cal Recycle Approval Letter on Friday, May 2nd for the partnership with Hambro Recycling. And they will be moving forward with the beverage container recycling project. So that's commonly known as the CRV recycling. We're officially partnering with Humboldt County under their already existing pilot project. Hambro Recycling is currently finalizing the purchase agreement with Bigfoot Recycling, which the approval letter on the 2nd of May, you know, is driving that timeline. So they've been working that purchase agreement, but now since we have the official approval, that process will continue on and they'll be able to close escrow. The expected completion date is 1 July, but it could be sooner. But we don't want to make any promises before 1 July. Hambro Recycling has already purchased the big, the box truck and they're just awaiting delivery and that will be at the facility. The facility will be, as I previously talked, at 31 Davis Road in Weaverville. It's where Bigfoot previously operated from. And Hambro is very committed to this. They're a larger recycling organization who has operations in Humboldt and Chastity County. And they're really enthusiastic about bringing this capability to Trinity County. The last item I have is, staff has been working a permanent supportive-type housing project for many months under the potential Home Key Plus program. The county team, which includes Housing, our Home Tools, which is a housing consultant that we have online via HHS, the developer, who is Dan Co., and NBCSS, North Valley Catholic Social Services, we all met with HCD, so the California State Housing and Community Development Department as part of the technical pre-application review. And unfortunately, HCD put some constraints on the potential project that simply made the numbers just not pencil out. We were not expecting the additional constraints that HCD put on the proposed project, which is unfortunate because you would think they would be bending over backwards to try to get housing projects online. But it is what it is and the team has kind of pivoted and we're evaluating some other locations in the Weaverville area for a potential tax credit type project. These projects take longer, but there are less constraints with them. So the team thinks this is actually in the long run, probably a, I don't want to say better option, but an option that gives us more control and less constraints on the overall project. So as this project continues to develop, I'll bring back and talk about updates, you know, as, as we can and as some of the unknowns right now become knowns. But Dan Co. is still very committed to a housing project in, in the area, as is NBCSS. So I think we've got a good partnership. We just got to find the, the exact location and work towards the funding aspect. But as been previously reported in here, we do have some, the county does have some very specific housing funds from previous state programs that have been out there and. programs that have been out there and, and previous grants that we've applied for. So we do have a little bit of, of funding to kickstart a project, but not a lot, but some to get a project going. And that is all I have for right now. Well, hold on, I have one more thing I'm going to say. So I usually wouldn't do this, but I will because Suzy's sitting right across from me. And I can't. So as far as employee recognition, Suzy was recognized as the employee of the quarter for the county, which was sent out, but I have a nice certificate for her here and I just want to publicly say thank you and recognize her for all her efforts, as you all are very well aware of. She is sitting here clerking our board meetings once again and we're going through that transition. And those mini hats that were mentioned earlier are in fact being rotated around right now. So just want to recognize her efforts and say thank you publicly. And now that's the last of my comments.
Great job, Suzy. Thank you. And I know I probably lean on you the most, so a little bit more from me. CEO Tuthill, on the CRV, is that just a bottle and can, no cardboard?
There is, that does not include cardboard. Individuals can recycle cardboard right now, as we speak, at the solid waste facility here in Weaverville. We're still accepting, you know, cardboard free of charge for recycling purposes. It's got to be clean, it's got to be all that kind of stuff, but it's, that's still an option at the solid waste facility.
And I just wanted to comment on Michael from IT leaving us a great candidate and Dan, one of the nine, I think he said, applicants that were picked from a neutral partnership or with their other county. And good to see that we got to hire someone from within, that, you know, Mike brought up Dan in the right way and hopefully that, you know, continues on throughout not just the IT part of our world, but the rest of our department heads or departments. It's always good to see people come from within and rise up through the ranks here in our county. So congratulations to Mike for doing a good job and Dan for me being a pain in the ass pretty quick. So thank you to both of them and you, Suzy. Do we have reports to the members of the Board of Supervisors? I will go first then. I am on several different committees with the folks here on the board. So I would just say that I had a town hall meeting last week and we had someone from the Watershed, Watershed Center have a presentation there. There's probably 30 or 35 people in Hayfork. And they have a huge grant in Hayfork to do defensible space cleanup there, not just chipping, but actual defensible space on your property. And it's, it's a huge grant, they're looking for all the people they can to apply for this thing. They showed us slides, pictures. It's very extensive and it's very free. You just need to sign up and they will come out and do it for you. It's the Greater Hayfork area, goes out a little bit out High and Palm Road. I don't think it's a fixed block. So they are, they do have a little bit of wriggle room to move around a little bit, maybe out High and Palm Road some and out Wildwood Road a ways. But I would implore anybody that's in District 3 to go to the Watershed Center and apply for this. This will be something that will be defensible space, not just for now, but from the projects I've seen in the past, it will last, you know, three, four, five years. So it's a great, great opportunity to get something done on your property and keep this grant alive. The other questions I had at my town hall were the homeless encampment ad hoc that myself and Jill Ron, and they were just wondering, when are we coming to Hayfork? They obviously have a problem there too. We had discussed that, I think, the meeting prior to my town hall and we will be out there soon. There's more places than I have time to list right now, but plenty of options out there. And they would like to see some similar response to what Weaverville got. And I'm sure we will. So they're happy about that. There's some, there's some problem issues out there that need to be cleaned up that are longstanding. And I will move on to Julia, Julia, do you have any reports?
So I met with, out of town, I met with the Colusa Glen Trinity Alliance. They were, oh, sorry. I'm sorry, I'm really bad at talking loud enough, but. So I met with the Colusa Glen Trinity Alliance, really wonderful meeting, great people. They're pushing into Trinity a little bit more, which is really nice to hear. So we'll be trying to hire here and, and the work that they're doing is amazing with all the rural needs that we have. So it's a short, it's a short one, but just want to give a shout out to them. They're a very good group of people. Dan Fraser is the chairman on that and it's working out really well. That's a nice group of people, we're going to get a lot done with that, I think. I've had town halls and the questions with our town hall are about roads and about getting together for industry. So we're, we're creatively trying to come up with ways to make more private industry up in the rural areas. So we're looking at farmers markets, how to expand the markets for those, flea markets. Cattlemen are working on ways to maybe cattle yards with the ag department. So we're working on the cattle department. Cannabis is always on the table, so we're trying to figure out how to appropriately move forward with, with that and I know the county's doing a good job on moving forward with the policy here. Restaurants, home-based businesses, those are the types of things that we want to see up there. And so we are really adamant about getting our roads in shape so that we can grow a little bit up there. I want to thank the road department for recently doing a little bit of a stretch of road that was really bad. It's a temporary fix, I understand that and it is, it is a, it's nice to see it, to some progress for our, for our trucks. We battle the roads horribly up there, so if, if our funds that we don't see from the rural schools come through, we'll have to get some sort of create creativity going on, finding funding for the maintenance of our roads up there, it's just going to be crucial. We won't let up till we get those drivable and passable and decent. I have four years, but it should be earlier than that, I'm sure. Anyway, I want to thank our new, our new clerk and Suzy for all the work that they always do. So thank you, that's it for me.
Question if I could, you mentioned that the Colusa Glen Trinity Alliance is working on hiring, I wonder what that exactly is?
Well, they're, they're pushing into Trinity County a little bit more. Oh, sorry, they're pushing into, we don't know what that looks like yet, but they're looking at support systems for domestic violence, those types of things. So I'm not quite sure exactly the hiring, it's very early, but they want to push more into Trinity County. That was the gist of what I got. And the lady from domestic violence is heading.
CEO Tuthill?
This is the continuum of care that we're a partner with. So HHS is very tied into that and just encourage that, that continued partnership there.
Yeah, wonderful, yeah.
That's, that's what the reference is.
Okay. I'm good.
Supervisor Cox?
Okay, headline news would be that the Golden State Connect Authority application that we had the presentation on and received many letters of support submitted, was submitted to the CPUC last Tuesday, well ahead of the deadline. The project area will cover approximately 86 miles along Highway 299. It passes 2,134 addresses, the bulk of which are unserved. The project total cost was 20.9 million, of which Golden State Connect Authority requested 18.9 million from the CPUC FFA Last Mile Program. The balance of the project cost will come from tax-exempt broadband bonds that Golden State will issue if the project is awarded. Related, but not the same, Golden State is also at work submitting a grant for digital equity for $215,000 for Trinity County. And so thank you to those, to whom I reached out and who so quickly provided letters of support that were needed and on a very short timeline. I had a note here to update on crosswalks, but we've kind of had that discussion with the Caltrans presentation. I was at the Firewise Fair Saturday in Hayfork. 17 booths approximately across the various fire and emergency response sectors were there, serving our communities, including the pre-launch of Ready Trinity. So it was nice to see that table as well. Want to just give a hearty congratulations to Emily Drain and her team at the RCD that worked hard to put that event together. Our communities definitely become safer as education awareness and those collective efforts increase. I was at the community stakeholders meeting and a result of that, just to give a little awareness to an opportunity that HRN is providing for parents, it's called a parent cafe. This is not the first one that they have done. It is on May 7th. Dinner and childcare are provided. This is an opportunity to exchange ideas, provide tips for self-care to parents, strategies for raising resilient children, tools to strengthen relationships, a raffle drawing and giveaways and there is a QR code at various locations. Or you can call HRN, you do need to register since dinner and childcare are provided, they need to know you're coming. On Monday, I will begin my ad hoc work through RCRC addressing the employment, recruitment and retention concerns of our rural communities. In preparation, I said communities and I think really I mean counties. I believe we're going to explore the recruitment and retention that we need within our county staff. In preparation for that, I have a meeting with our HR Director to collect her thoughts, concerns and ideas and I open that communication to anyone who may have such ideas or concerns to bring before that body. And then just lastly, this is just kind of a personal reflective regarding our first responders. I, I was surprised because I didn't track the dates, but delighted to find that the timing of this Public Service Recognition Week proclamation was on our agenda for today because I already had intended to address thoughts regarding our first responders. I just want to say it is, this is a little emotional in, with regard to this week's events. It is easy to become accustomed to the normalcy of lights, sirens and helicopters. If we're in traffic, we pull over and they go speeding past. If we're in conversation, we often pause and then we continue our dialogue. If it happens to be my worst day, my appreciation certainly rises when help shows up. But how often do we truly stop to think, that is a job I absolutely could not do? That's a job for which project completion can and often does leave an indelible mark, which may ease with time, may fit into a livable slot with some outside intervention, or may be worn forever by our first responders. I'm pleased that a week is specifically set aside and recognized with intentionality. And along with that, I encourage you to join me in a renewed commitment. When you hear those lights, when you see, hear the sirens, see the lights, hear the helicopters, or read the subsequent public report, pause for just a moment to consider the trained, committed professionals and the volunteers who daily put their lives on the line and often live with scars on their hearts for their service to us. Pray for their safety along with that of incident victims and commit yourself to a heightened appreciation of what we so easily call normal.
So I just want to add a comment to that, Jill, that, you know, I own a store right across from our Volunteer Fire Department. And I think when the majority of folks, men or women, sign up to be a volunteer fire person, they think about the fire aspect of things. They're going to run into a house and put out a fire, which is really the minority of what they do. They do very little of that, but they do a lot of first responder. And I mean that by, they are the first on the scene. Generally, if there's an accident in Double City, Double City area, it's our guys from Double City Fire Department. And, you know, Jill said, I don't think that when you sign up for a volunteer fire department, I don't think that you visually think about what you may see in an accident. I wouldn't do it, I, I don't, you know, I don't have the heart for that, but I'm glad that they do. And, you know, you see people that have been to their first accident and seen something horrible and stick around and, and you know, that takes a lot of courage. So I give all of them throughout the whole county, throughout the state. Those folks who do that are unbelievable, they save lives daily. And generally, they are ahead of schedule on the scene in front of our county sheriff and the CHP. And I think they are, we could not be without them and I thank all of them.
Just one thing, that is something that I did was a volunteer EMT. And to Jill's point, it is, you see horrible things, but you also save people's lives and will remember the ones that we flew out and called on and they, they made it. And yeah, these are wonderful people who devote their time and their lives and so yep, cheers to all of them.
Thank you. Well, just to, to pick up on that, I think, just to give a frame of reference. So in Lewiston, during less than 18 months, and, and I did join because I've seen something about fire and thinking, oh, I need to help put out fires. And, and then found out the rest of the story. And in that less than 18 month, there were 113 calls that I went on. Forget how many others that I didn't go on, 10 of those involved death. So it is, the, the people that are doing this work are giving so much of themselves and taking on so much. And yes, as Supervisor Brownfield said, it, it can be rewarding when you're able to help and it can be heartbreaking when you can't. But yes, so thank you for raising that, appreciate that. Okay. My update, NorTech Executive Committee, I've chaired two meetings so far to address the recently announced retirement of the NorTech's Executive Director. Actually, yesterday, there was supposed to be a third meeting, but it was scheduled at the same time as the Tourism Development Advisory Board meeting, so I had to reschedule that. The, I went on a collaborative tour. This is where I was joining members of the Trinity County Collaborative, Trinity River Lumber, Trinity County RCD, BLM and others for a tour of lands in the Lewiston area that are scheduled for fuel management treatment. It was great to see everybody out there, see the work that was being done. And I think most encouraging was, there was a lot of agreement and consensus. So I think we're getting to a place where all of our partnerships are more aligned and expectations are aligned, which is great. PSA 2 Board Meeting was held on April 21st, I think that was since our last meeting. The Tourism Development Advisory Board. So we met on April 21st and again yesterday. And the ad hoc committee continues to meet in between these meetings. So all, the Advisory Board is meeting every other week, the ad hoc committee is meeting in the weeks in between. So these folks are really giving their all for this. And what they are doing is being able to engage at a deeper level in between meetings to work out details. They are also in a position to be able to meet with members of the lodging business community. to meet with members of the lodging business community together, whereas the full board can't really have an open dialogue. So that's, it's just great that they're committing so much, and I appreciate their support. The current priority is to gain feedback from lodging business owners regarding the proposed structure and focus of the Tourism Development District. And that's something that, there's been some misinformation, so we've been trying hard to clarify that, including last night. But I think some people are feeling like this advisory board is making final decisions and then pushing it on lodging business owners, when in fact, we're trying to do the heavy lifting and ministrivia to get it ready to bring to them so that they can give feedback about that. And then we'll finalize and take it to petition. And so, we, you know, we've been making decisions, if you will, but those decisions are, we want to go forward to them with a 3% rate, with a five-year term, with a county-wide focus, things like that. But now, our process is engage with those folks, find out if they agree with that, if they don't make changes. But once we go to the petition stage, we're locked in. We can't make any more changes. So we're in that mode of, we're ready to go engage, and we have the communication contact information. We have some materials that can be sent out to folks. We're going to be hosting virtual meetings, live meetings, things like that. So it's, we're at a very important stage because we're kind of at the point of figuring out if we're going to have enough momentum to move forward. Materials for use in the petition will be finalized based on the feedback received. So that's where we're talking about this engagement. I think I mentioned before, but the advisory board does not feel that the scope of the initiative should be expanded. That was one of the things I asked the board of at the last meeting, I think. You know, would you be willing to provide more funding if we wanted to expand and thought that was necessary to be successful? And the advisory board said, "We really don't think so." And also, Civitas said, "We really don't think so." Almost all of them stay focused on the lodging part first and maybe expand. One thing that was interesting is if we are successful in getting the lodging business Investment District, Tourism Development District in place, other businesses can voluntarily participate. So if you're in the lodging, it's an all or none. If you're outside of lodging, you can still participate voluntarily. And there's details about that that I won't go into because last time we turned it into a separate agenda, and I want to avoid that. If successful, the new district is estimated to generate upwards of $200,000 per year. That would all go to a new nonprofit led by a board made up of participants in the program. They would decide how that money would be spent. And also wanted to highlight that thanks to Mary Rist and others on the IT department, the county website now includes the advisory board meeting calendar and a link so that you can sign up to be notified when meetings are taking place, when the agendas are being sent out. So we're trying to make that information as accessible as possible. I was at the, in Sacramento for the CSAC Legislative Conference. This is a two-day event that's held each year. And you have these various policy committees that CSAC is focused on. And they walk through, what are their policies, what's going on in legislation that we need to be aware of, what things do we collectively as CSAC oppose or support, what might we anticipate as an impact. So as I received information, I was sending that back so that the people here on staff would have the information I was receiving. You know, probably sometimes they already know that. And it's just me knowing. Sometimes maybe there's some new information, but we just want to make sure we share it as much as possible. And then the CSAC Board Meeting was held the day after the Legislative Conference in Sacramento. And that's where we go through and approve, a vote to approve whether supporting or opposing and such. And then the last thing is there was an indivisible organization. It's apparently a nationwide organization, but there are local groups, and that local group was putting together a town hall meeting at our Performing Arts Center. And I joined Jamie Green and Assembly Member Damon Connolly, who is not our assembly member, but I think he was there primarily because he's announcing also that he's running for Senator McGuire's spot. So he was there to participate as well. And I would guess there was close to 100 people in the room and went for a couple of hours before I at least had to leave, and I think they were about to wrap up. That's my update.
Could you repeat for my benefit the amount of money that was anticipated to come in? If the T-bid passes, I missed that.
It would be estimated at around $200,000 a year. And just for clarity's sake, right now, we get a little over $300,000 from the 5% TOT. That's probably going up because Terry McBrayer is with her new platform that she's using is helping her identify people that should have been paying that haven't been. So that's probably going to go up. So I'm still in the rough numbers of 300, 350,000. That's 5%. We're planning to start at 3%. So if you do the math, then you're right around 200,000. And then as it's set up, the program allows for it to be increased by 1% a year, up to a max of 5%. The decision as to whether it would go up or not, and it could go down, would be that new board assigned for that nonprofit. So out of our hands once it's established. But that's, that would be their ability to make those changes. So it could, if it moved up to the 5% total by the end of the five years, they could be generating 350,000. That all comes directly to them just for tourism development.
Thank you for saying that because I did have a couple of questions come to me this week where people got a little bit confused and thought that money was going into the general fund, and it is not.
Yeah, there actually was a change.org petition that somebody made me aware of, and I looked at it and reached out to the organizer and said, "So what you're worried about, we're not doing. And what you want to be done is we are doing." And then that person attended our meeting yesterday.
Nice. Good.
Hopefully, we're getting some of this misunderstanding clarified.
Yeah, and I just wanted to comment. I sit on that with Rick, and Rick did a great job facilitating that. But it's kind of strange how we had what I thought was clear communication yesterday, and some of the people in the public did not understand or want to understand the clear communication that was given by yourself and others. And also, on this tourism development piece, it's probably going to be, what, a year plus since we, I don't know if they came to a hard date yesterday when the, an act is, but it looks like it'll be a year or so out.
Yeah, the timing clarification, we're hopeful that we will be through the process of getting it established this summer sometime. But some of the feedback being received through our outreach was, "But please don't make us put a new assessment into our billing systems in the middle of our busy season." And so, they were asking for that to be pushed out to, yes, put it in place, but don't start the assessment actually until, say, July 1st. I mean, January 1st. So that was just, you know, a piece of information that was coming, and the advisory board trying to respond to that.
And then it might be six months or so till we actually realize any money from that.
Yeah, it takes a while to start getting collected and such.
So this is probably not till middle of '26, I would think. We would maybe start to realize some of that money. But I do think there's a, the board is really good that we have up here. They do a good job. You do a good job facilitating. It's just going to be a matter of convincing some of the hotel owners, and I think you've got a good board to do it. Supervisor Carpenter, were you done?
One question to the county council. So this update is obviously more detailed than other updates that I give on other things, like Legislative Conference and so forth. Are we to the point where if we're going to get into this much information and back and forth questions, that we should just make it a presentation?
Yeah, because the back and forth, the back and forth conversations is what kind of turns it into an actual discussion because people are going to express their concerns through their questions. So you probably should agendize it for a special.
So I'll just look to the board to say, is that something that you want to have a presentation? And then we can schedule it, and I'm happy to provide pretty much the same information, but then we're working within our constraints instead of poking at them. So is that, would you, would you like to have that as we go forward?
Yeah, I think.
Question of clarity, the thing that differentiates this from like an ad hoc report is, like, an ad hoc report is on the agenda every week. If this were on the agenda every week, then it would work?
Yes, I think what he's talking about though is the extent of discussion that may ensue from the report itself. So if you, if you agendize it as a special item, then you're able to more freely discuss your questions and dig into what, if any, direction you may want to give.
I think it might, do you ask for opinions, correct?
Yeah.
I do think it would be wise to do so because it gives us the opportunity to do so even if I needed, we could move forward.
Yeah, I think we should probably, give everybody idea of where we're at timeframe moving forward.
Okay.
Supervisor, you done? Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Well, I'd just like to say thank you to all of my fellow board members for all of the work that everyone does. These meetings are just a portion of what, of what we do, and it's a lot of running around and spending a lot of time. And I'm just grateful that we're all at work. Thank you, everybody. I attended the Air Quality Control Board Meeting in Eureka. I had two meetings scheduled for the same day, and so I'm grateful that Supervisor Brownfield was able to go to Kalusa because I couldn't be in Kalusa and Eureka at the same exact time. So we divided and conquered in that regard. I also attended after last meeting, along with other board members, the LAFCO meeting that occurred after last board meeting. The primary point of discussion there is the work that's being done in Post Mountain with the service district to try to get those folks set up and organized so that they can continue to do the work that's necessary up there on the roads and providing volunteer fire department services and potentially looking towards a development of more sustained resources in the area of water delivery and electricity. I just want to take a little bit of extra time to say thank you, as been the theme of today, to our emergency responders in Hyampom on the fire. The community there rallied together and was able to keep themselves safe, and I'm grateful for that. I love our county because we all stick together. And when a call is made, a call is made, and people jump towards the task. I want to take a brief moment, and I would like, after I make this statement, to invite everyone to just take a moment of silence for the family that lost their baby Oliver this last week in the river. I cannot imagine the pain and anguish that is in their hearts and souls and throughout their, their family. I am so grateful for the Coast Guard and the California Highway Patrol and Calyes and CalFire and the Downriver Volunteer Fire Departments and the Shasta County Sheriff's Office Dive Team and everyone else who has taken time to help look for this lost infant in the river. So if you guys would come with me right now, just in a moment, we'll just take a moment of silence to represent our concern for that family. My prayer is that God will deliver them peace and comfort during this very difficult time. In addition to the loss of baby Oliver this last week in the river, the Klamath River Community also experienced the loss of two lives in the Klamath. This is the time of year where the river is still very cold and very rapid, but as outside temperatures begin to rise, people have an extended desire and a greater desire to explore the riverine areas. I just would like to encourage everyone, if you have the chance, to speak into the ears of folks who are visiting our region, that it is not time to get in the water. I don't care how hot it is outside. I don't care how much you think there's a little pool off to the side that you can just get your feet wet in. It is not time to get into the river. So please be cautious and be aware and help people who are from out of town have a greater understanding of the swiftness and the coldness of our waters. I just had the opportunity to participate in a very local and very authentic bullfight on the Azur Islands and watching one of the things three people said to us, "We will not tell you how to get there unless you promise to mind us. You do not go past the lines. You stay in the balconies, and we won't tell you how to get to the town where it is unless you promise to mind us." And it made me think of our lives here on the river. People want to know how to get to our swimming holes, and when we tell them it's not time, they still find a way and they find themselves in jeopardy. So I was very happy to mind them because I know how important it is for people to adhere to our local knowledge. I just also want to take the time to remind everybody that as we approach the end of the school year, the school buses will be all over, carrying our most precious cargo to field trips up and down our mountain roads. So please take extra care when you do, when you're driving by our school buses, or when you see those stop signs out, or when you see that trail of beautiful young humans running from the park to their bus. Just take extra care and drive slow and pay attention. And give a little prayer out for all of the school bus drivers and all of our kids that are going to be experiencing those springtime field trips. And thank you for letting me serve you.
We will go to the ad hoc for the homeless encampment. Jill?
Let's see.
Yeah, I've got an update on that. I would also just like to, you know, with the theme of recognizing the first responders, I want to recognize our own Trinity County Search and Rescue Organization. They have been the one leading the entire effort for this search. So even though we've got lots of outside organizations that are providing help, our very own Trinity County Search and Rescue Organization has been leading that entire effort since our minute one that this has been going on.
Yes, and I've heard nothing but gratitude towards them for their efforts.
Agreed. I just want to make sure that, you know, the public and everyone is aware that that is a huge effort on, in essence, our sheriff's office and a largely volunteer organization. And they do fabulous work. For the ad hoc update, for the homeless encampment ad hoc update, so part of what the ad hoc decided to do was draft an ordinance and some ordinance revisions. That has been accomplished. The ad hoc has reviewed those. Those are now with county council for review. And the goal is to have those back for the ad hoc to review at our next meeting. There is another camp walk that is scheduled, and I'm confident that it's not going to be in the same area it was before, but it'll probably be over in a different district. We don't announce when and where those are, but there is another camp walk scheduled, and it's not going to be at the same location our previous ones were. CalFire crews are in fact out to, this morning, in the Browns Ranch Road area here in Weaverville. And that was one of the other areas that I'd previously announced that they would be performing some work on our behalf for the vegetation management. They're clearing around the bridge there and along that county-owned strip of land that is just downstream of Weaver Creek on the Highway 3 side. The next ad hoc is scheduled for the 15th of May in this room. And that's all I've got for the ad hoc update.
15th of May?
15th of May.
Does anybody need a break before we move into consent calendar?
Yes, please.
Let's take a five-minute break. We'll come back at 5:21. Let's take a five-minute break. We'll come back at five, two, eleven.
Are you talking about this specific first item?
Just order. Yes, the first. Just order, right? Say one more time?
You're just asking about the order if you want to change in the order?
Yeah, any changes?
No.
Everybody's good with that? Okay, we will start out with E one. There she is. I'll read it for you. Auditor Controller, approve a budget adjustment for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five for county audit Department one-one-zero-one increasing services and supplies by twenty-three thousand five hundred thirty-one dollars. And approve a budget adjustment for twenty-four, twenty-five for general fund contingency Department ninety-nine oh-one decreasing appropriations for contingency by twenty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Does anyone have any questions for me on this request?
Do not.
Good. All right, thank you.
Thanks for answering mine offline.
Yeah, sure. Not a problem.
I move to approve as presented. Oh, sorry.
Comment? Public comment? Anybody on?
I have none, but we still have to ask for it.
One more time? No?
No.
Okay.
Now, now I will make that motion to approve as presented.
I will second.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Lou Weller?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Chairman Gogan?
Aye.
Thank you.
E two, community development cannabis. Please the reading of an enacted ordinance amending Trinity County Code Section seventeen point four-three pertaining to commercial cannabis regulations and Code Section one seven, seventeen point three-two pertaining to use permits introduced April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Drew, good to see you.
Thank you. Good to see you all. Good morning. Chair Supervisor Strupavani, Cannabis Division Director. As you're all aware, we've had significant discussion on this item over the last several board meetings. The purpose of these proposed code changes were to improve the administrative buffer reduction process and clarify primarily one of the components in terms of the consent opposition letter process and that it would be automatically scheduled to go to the planning commission instead of a automatic denial, which then would be appealable. So I think we've clarified that and then throughout some of the past few board meetings, we also made changes to subsection five, which we've discussed. So I don't know if you have any technical or clarifying questions for me, but if so, I'm here to answer them.
No questions? No questions from the board?
I'm moved to, to.
Public comment in the room? Zoom. Lisa, good afternoon. Yes, close.
Chair, board members Lisa Wright, I guess supervisors Lewiston. Sending love and warmth to you all and to the universe today. I think that second reading, it looks like we didn't have any technical questions. I urge you just to pass this so this can proceed into implementation in the next thirty days. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have no raised hands.
I move to, I move, move to approve as presented.
I will second. I just want to thank Drew for your work to help get us to the right place. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Supervisor Lou Weller?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Chairman Gogan?
Aye.
Thank you.
E three, county minister of office, select proposals for funding pursuant to Title III Secure Rural Schools and Community Self-Determination Act of two thousand and authorize the county minister officer to sign the agreements and any future amendments. Two hundred forty-one thousand five hundred from Title III funds.
Thanks, Chair. I think the outline in the staff report was pretty clear. And then in the recommendation, there was a statement in there about the proposed allocations based upon the funding we have available. Both those organizations have agreed to that. So if you have any questions, we can appropriately address.
Do you have any questions?
I have none.
Nobody?
I have no raised hands, no.
I would move to approve this as presented.
I will second. Thank you for working through that, Trent.
Thank you to Suzie.
Okay. I apologize. Jill, you made that motion? I seconded. Thank you. All right. Supervisor Carpenter Harris? Aye. Supervisor Cox? Aye. Supervisor Lou Weller?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield? Aye. Chairman Gogan?
Aye.
Thank you.
And that does it for this, our report out on closed session from the last meeting that we had. We direct, we directed staff on our legal counsel for a couple litigation cases. We also went ahead with the the providing of a survey for the C A O evaluation that we are going through at, at this time. We will now move into closed session. Do we have any comments in the room? Good afternoon now.
Good morning. Lisa Wright Lewiston, just circling back, I had mentioned at the last closed session, in the past, a grand jury had found that repeated evaluations of the C A O, county council slash other executives may have been a way of circumventing the public input process. When I see it a second time, then I just have to kind of question, is that, sounds like perhaps you did something. Now there's a survey. One of the things that may be useful from a public perspective is to understand the objectives and the goals that you are evaluating a public employee, in this case a C A O on, and what type of criteria you'd be setting for accomplishment. Would there be rankings such as one to five? You know, unsatisfactory, satisfactory, very, you know, high satisfactory, a range of things if that is available. And the previous grand jury report said that that was, there was a form for department managers and department heads that could be applicable to this situation as well. So I think more transparency in that process could alleviate some of the concerns about what may or may not be, you know, happening in, in closed session regarding an evaluation, given the history in the past. We actually had a former C A O in deposition admit that that was happening as well. So just to protect you, to protect the employee and the public, I think that more disclosure in the format, I know you can't really disclose content, but how are you going about the evaluation and what criteria you're using in terms of success of performance would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody on Zoom?
I have no raised hands.
No, be on Zoom. We will move into closed session. And we have two items on closed session today. F one, government section fifty-four nine five four point five E, public employee evaluation, C A O. F two, county government section five four nine five four point five zero F, labor negotiations, county designated representative, Leila Casillas, Suzie Hawkins, and Margaret Long, employee organizations, deputy sheriff's association, general unit management, and confidential unit, probation peace officers association, and skilled trade units. Do we have any public comment in the room?
Just did that.
All right, we're good.